Albion City Council, I'd ask that I call this meeting to order. If you have a cellphone, I ask that you place it on silent. We will begin with a moment of silence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Snyder, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Barnes, Reed, Brown here, Lawler here, Spicer here, French, and Mayor Brown.
Here. Public comments, persons addressing the City Council. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum and limit your comments to agenda items only. Are there any public comments this evening on the agenda?
Mayor Brown, councilmembers, citizens of Albion here and watching the live streaming presentation, good evening. I'm Mayor-elect Dave Atchison. I reside at 108 West Erie Street here in Albion, and I arise to address the agenda items for tonight's special council meeting. The absence of three councilmembers tonight is troubling as the lack of their participation is the city's loss and deprives residents in half of our city's precincts from equal representation. As the mayor-elect, I'm committed to working with each member of our city council on the issues facing our community, public housing in particular. We must put aside any personal differences and work for the benefit of all residents who live here. Earlier today, I sent each member of council an email invitation to meet and discuss whatever issues and initiatives each of you wish to work towards and pursue on behalf of Albion. I eagerly await your response with the times each of you will meet with me to find common ground and move forward as colleagues with the city, which the city residents expect. And Mayor Brown, it is in the best interest of the city that we have a smooth transition. To that end, earlier today, I emailed you asking when you are available for transition discussions. I await your response. I'm committed to working with our city manager and staff for the benefit and betterment of the city of Albion and the people we serve. It is the people we serve and not the other way around. I look forward to our regularly scheduled meetings each week in my office to conduct city business, collaborate, and move Albion forward. We all need to be transparent, ethical, and fully within the federal, state, and local laws, regulations, and ordinances. To that end, I must bring to your attention, this meeting is in violation of the Opens Meeting Act. As such, I strongly encourage you to immediately adjourn this meeting. The public notice for tonight's special meeting was not posted on the city's website, the mandatory eighteen hours in advance in the fashion required by the state of Michigan. Consequently, this meeting violates the Opens Meeting Act and is illegal. I do not participate in illegal action, and therefore, I bid you all good night.
So parliamentary point of order and information, which I'm allowed to do through Robert's Rules, Attorney Harkness, I know this question was raised to me by a councilmember-elect. I know you spoke with that councilmember-elect. Can you please clarify the Open Meetings Act regarding postings for our meetings and how that works?
So as far as general posting, it's posting in a conspicuous place. The public notice has to contain certain information. I don't think that's an issue here, but it's a, there's nothing that mandates us to have it on the website. I mean, as long as it's posted, a typical thing is posting it out in front of City Hall in the glass case. If it's, in the alternative, we could put it in the newspaper. So I don't believe there's any mandated method as long as it's conspicuous and serves the purpose of putting the public on notice that there is going to be this meeting. So my understanding is that it was posted, physically posted, as it normally is in the case out in front of City Hall and beyond that. So I, I don't think there's been a violation as to the notice requirement.
It's similar, just a follow-up, it's similar to when the council conducts business, the clerk records minutes of the meetings, and that's actually the legal documentation of the meeting, even though we have the videos. That is the legal record of the meeting. So just because you have other ways to disseminate information, record information, doesn't mean that the actual, there's actually a standard legal basis for public notification, which is in that case when we place ordinances or any other thing, we place it outside of City Hall, or when the clerk, every week, regular meeting when we approve minutes, those minutes and not the video of the meetings are actually the legal documentation of our meetings. So it's important that we have an understanding of how our government works and that we don't engage in theatrics if we do not understand the legal underpinnings of local governments. I appreciate, you want anything more?
I was just going to add, and actually, one of the examples used by the Michigan Attorney General is a public body can post a notice at the main entrance visible on the outside of the building that houses the principal office of the public body, which is exactly what happened here, and that's Attorney General Opinion Number 5724.
And at any point did the mayor-elect reach out to you to ask that? I know you reached out to one of the elected members.
I don't believe I received a question regarding the posting from, from the mayor-elect. There was a question about the hours of notice, and I did respond to another councilmember-elect about the method of posting.
Yeah, and that's, you know, just, this is an extreme point of order information, but hopefully, when we have this transition discussion, we can talk about the importance of talking to administrators, the administrator and the attorney before taking actions like that. So is there any further public comment this evening on the agenda?
We're still doing public comments?
Yes.
Oh, we didn't have that.
Mayor Brown, this is Rufus, counsel. My name is Daniel Farmer. I live at 1101 Wiener Drive, and I'd like to clarify your independent, or your in-house counsel's statement, and it does state in Open Meetings Act 267 of 1967 in paragraph four, that if this public body directly or indirectly maintains an official internet presence that includes monthly or more frequent updates, do we upgrade, update our, that's the clear point of clarification each made, do we update our website? That's, well, that's the point you need to clarify, I guess. Do we update it? I'm as far as the legal point. Secondly, I would like to bring us concerns I've had recently about...
Wait, are they, are they ready to?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, about, about what's on, what's on the docket.
Okay.
I do apologize, yes. It was stated in here that we're going to be paying moving costs a second time. Is that what's in the agenda for the day? There's something about $6,000, was that, is that wrong about that? Item, item four on your agenda, isn't it? Item three or four?
Does it say?
I don't know, it says, talking about a major contract amendment to moving expenses, item C.
It is an amendment, yeah.
Is that, is that part of what we're talking about here before we begin, or?
Well...
Is that part of what we can talk about right now or no?
You can talk about it, but we, it's, it just said moving.
I was just curious, I was just curious as to why we're amending moving expenses. What was the cause? I guess. I don't understand. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on the, on agenda items?
Media Wolf, 409 Irwin Ave. On the amendment to city manager contract, the request to amend an already generous contract to provide more monetary benefits to the city manager should be carefully considered on the merits alone, not any personal bias or political affiliation. On the basis of merit, no clear explanation is provided which would justify doubling the period from forty-five to ninety days. The city manager is here, why the necessity for another forty-five days? Has something occurred locally which requires the city manager to make a second move locally? Second, is it reckless, it is reckless to essentially provide an open-ended check by eliminating this limitation of reimbursement at $6,500. There are no definitions provided in what would be considered a valid reimbursable moving expense. Is the city manager asking for the taxpayers of Albion to fund repetitive trips between Harvey, Illinois and Albion for ninety days? Do these expenses include meals, temporary lodging, mileage, and other miscellaneous expenses? Are we supposed to reimburse the city manager for anything she deems as a moving expense? Who will be reviewing and approving submitted expenses for reimbursement? Approval of this request would not be in the best interest of the city of Albion.
Any further public comment this evening on the agenda?
Mayor, counsel, good evening. Concerning Resolution 201827, review of financial qualifications for candidates, both the necessity and timing of this resolution are troubling. Federal and state law plus local Albion ordinances already require elected officials be current on tax liabilities and financial obligations prior to being sworn into office. This ordinance exceeds current election requirements and as, as such, is overreach, an overreach of our city council or by our city council and will most likely be challenged in the court system if enacted. Therefore, the necessity for this ordinance is nonexistent and may in fact result in legal liability for the city. The timing of this resolution now, a week after the election, many months after people became candidates, is dubious at best. There, this appears to be nothing more than a tool for outgoing leadership to exert influence along with the council majority after the election loss. This resolution is surely written to be applied to publicly embarrass candidates who were duly elected by the voters last week. Also, why isn't this council focusing on the 2019 budget? The drafts, the budget draft submitted by the city manager in October is a non-sustainable budget. It recommends over $440,000 in new expenditures with no new revenue and no good reason presented for it. At that rate, we would be bankrupt in less than three years. The resolutions on this agenda have no pressing need for action today, but our budget does. Thank you. By the way, I am Al Smith, 1209 Adams Street, and a member of the Albion Leadership Council.
I'm Susan Connor, 811 East Michigan Avenue, Albion. As part of the Albion Leadership Council, I would like to address the code of ethics that is on your agenda for this evening. But first, I'd like to point out that I only learned of this meeting this morning since it was not listed in the E-News, and I have not been receiving the Team Albion email, which may not exist anymore, or at least I'm no longer on that list. Be that as it may, as my mother would have said, I have a number of concerns about the code of ethics, and I encourage the council to review these concerns along with others and postpone their vote. Some of my comments may appear limited in scope, but ultimately, they are substantive when something is being codified. First, there are typos. The most glaring one is in G, "public resources." The full paragraph reads in the following manner, but note line two, "Public resources including city staff, time, equipment, supplies, and facilities not available to the public in general shall on be used for the benefit of the public and not for a council member's personal or private use." I'm sure that "on" is meant to mean "only," but I would not want to argue that in a court of law. Second, the use of "will" and "shall." While "will" and "shall" are often used interchangeably today in common parlance, they have had different meanings in the past and legally. "Will" is permissive. "Shall" is prescriptive and directive. "Will" generally carries few penalties, although sanctions are often applied to those cases of "shall." It was interesting to me that only A, in the code of ethics, used the word "will." Listen to the words. Acting in the public interest, members of the city council will work for the common good of the people of Albion and not for any private or personal interest, and they will assure fair and equal treatment of all persons' claims and transactions coming before the city, Albion City Council. Not "shall," but "will." Does this mean that conflicts of interest are permissible, if not deemed dangerous, and they may not be sanctioned? Three, under N of enforcement, I am concerned that nearly more words are spent on sanctions than on transparent, conflict-free, and public-spirited government. I have never known a code to disallow rules of evidence of civil procedure or at least to spell out what will apply in the absence of the legal meaning of those words. Furthermore, I wish to grin that not acting in the public interest was relegated, was relegated to a level-one offense when to me the most important actions of council are A and B, acting in the public interest and abiding by the law. This code of ethics to me looks inward, not outward as it should. I trust the council will reconsider what it is doing and postpone its vote. Thank you.
Can you please restate your name for the record, ma'am? Can you restate your name for the?
Oh, I'm sorry, Susan Connor, 811 East Michigan. Thank you.
Is there, is there any further public comment on the agenda this evening?
Hello, Eric Tobin, 409 West Ash. I wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight about item E on the agenda. I was actually very shocked to see it on this. I didn't think we were going to be talking about it until the nineteenth. But as the interested party in, in this item thing, I thought that it would be nice that I got notified in advance of, of any, any kind of discussion. Anyways, as you know, we, there has been a decision that's been already made on this. It was discovered that the property couldn't be sold and that we would have to do road right-of-way abandonment. We went through that process, or started that, down that road of that process, and with interim city manager Scott Kip. And it was an agreement with the interim city manager that we would be able to acquire the property, the entire property, once the road abandonment went through, and, and we would have up until July to do a survey on the property and acquire it at that time. That was the agreement that was made, it was not in writing, so I do apologize for that. But, you know, I'd hope that we would honor the decisions of the council made before. I don't know what keeps happening, but it seems like I, every single step in the four-year process of doing this, there's been one thing after another. Oh, we got to change the charter. Oh, you know, you've got to sell it at like $4,000, which was given to me. So it just seems like one thing after another. Instead of taking a resident who's, you know, a taxpaying, voting citizen of Albion, by the way, I'm, I'm coming before you tonight as a resident, need to point that out, and I need to make sure that that's in the record, that I am here before you as a resident, not of, not of any other organization or belonging to any, any government entity. So I am a resident, coming before you. The, so, you know, I'm just confused as to why other organizations, you know, a good example was, you know, Mr. Sims. My request was in well before Mr. Sims was, Mr. Sims came in here, bought three properties for a dollar with closing costs, prime real estate along Erie Road, and that also nobody has wanted, obviously, in the last, but that went through, lickety-split, no problems, and then I'm here constantly hit with roadblock after roadblock after roadblock, and I've got the documentation to show that. If there is an issue, it would be helpful that if the city would communicate that with me ahead of time so that we can discuss that and, you know, have more information. So if there is information about a law or a rule, what, time's up? Okay, sorry. I'd just like to know it, and if you can't, if it can't go to me, then how about it go to my wife?
Is there any public comment this evening on agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. Item A in the presentation is the Albion Housing Commission Annual Report to Counsel.
Good evening. Anne Kemp, Albion Housing Commission, 807 North Buryan Street. I am here to give a snapshot of what the Housing Commission is doing previously or for this year.
Can you hear?
You can't hear? Okay. We have adopted a smoke-free policy. It was originally adopted before HUD had mandated it, March 15, 2016. Recently, we have had or made provisions in our smoke-free policy in regards to listing the PIH notice, incorporating written notices in regards to lease violations.
Just, I'm going to have you pause.
Okay.
Testing, testing. Can you hear me? Just one second, I have a little audio.
I have audio back there, but I don't know why we don't hear. Harkness got turned off. The audio's going out.
Okay.
I'll speak up.
No, I think...
No, I don't want to. We don't want to see the audio on in here, but the audio's going out over the TV.
Okay. Proceed, I'm sorry.
Thank you, okay. So we amended our smoke-free policy in regards to, again, listing the PIH notice and also amending the areas where residents will have a first warning, a second warning, and a final warning in regards to smoking in their units or on the property. We are now addressing the marijuana, the recreational marijuana law that was just recently passed. So my board meeting meets on next Tuesday, so that will be a fun topic to discuss. Okay, again, the Housing Commission does have security cameras, and we are in the process of updating the cameras and the lighting in the area by a company out of Rogers, Minnesota. It's, the company is called Your Six Company. We are now in the second phase of our window and door replacement in our Northview homes with thirteen buildings being completed. We will have a Phase Three in 2019.
You said windows and?
Windows and doors. Mm-hmm. Door replacements in Northview Homes. Vacancies. We have recently received a letter from the HUD office in Detroit that the Housing Commission has been issued a letter in regards to being substandard management, in regards to our vacancies. Our vacancies, well, HUD requires that vacancies are at at least 97% on a monthly basis. Our monthly average has been running approximately 94.3%. So in that respect, we had to send a plan to HUD indicating what we planned to do to increase our vacancies. We had to address unit turnaround, which regards maintenance, getting into the units and turning those units around approximately three to five days. We are now networking or doing more networking with more agencies in the community. We recently attended a homeless fair in October, October 19th, we attended our first homeless fair, and the Housing Commission actually passed out seventy applications. The board has recently adopted a homeless preference, since we all know that homelessness is on the rise, regardless if, if you're sleeping in your car, on a friend's couch, or however, if you're deemed homeless, you would require a, a preference. We have placed vacancy flyers in the Jackson Housing Commission and the Battle Creek Housing Commission's lobby. They have approved for us to do that. We will continue to use our capital fund money in regards to curb appeal and maintaining our buildings. Again, we're working more closely with some of the shelters, the homeless shelters, the men's shelters, 211, Community Action, AIM, and local churches. Recently, a satisfaction survey was presented to our residents with the deadline being of October 13th. We are in the process of compiling those, those surveys, so that will be presented at my board meeting as well on Tuesday. In doing so with our vacancies, again, we have been considered substandard based on our vacancies, but again, I have been given the directive from my board not to compromise our tenant selection criteria just to fill the unit. So we're still abiding by our tenant selection criteria in order to do so. So that's pretty much all I have for this evening.
Questions from counsel? I guess I'll, I'll start off. So one of the perennial things that happens since I've been on counsel for eight years is there's always been a question about the role between counsel and the Housing Commission and administration. And so I don't know, after this meeting, we can probably email it to you, but we, we asked the city attorney to draft a memo to kind of explain what, how it all, how the pieces fit together. And from the top of my head, what I recall from that was, housing commissions are set up by the state, they allow the city to do it, they're independent from the city beyond, you know, board appointments and certain kind of oversight topics. So the, the commission board is responsible for construction, maintenance, operations, and the, the role of the council plays is the council's, in this, in Albion, has designated the mayor as the appointing official for the board, and there's five board members, five-year terms. And the council's role, because there were some councilmembers who said the council had no involvement whatsoever. But what, what we, what we learned from the memo and from the state law is that the council has, what I would say, kind of middle-level responsibility when it comes to the Housing Commission in terms of, obviously, the one requirement is the annual report. We also have the authority to request just various reports, you know, by resolution on, you know, different issues. There's, there is a section regarding setting compensation for board members, if I remember correctly, and, and then setting the, I guess, the compensation structure even for, for staff. So that is a role where counsel, that's a role that counsel has. And then the, I guess, the third component was the issue of where, where HUD comes into it. I think that was a question we had, and what Attorney Harkness explained to us is that HUD comes in to the extent that when we accept their money, we're the string, whatever strings they attach to their funding, we have to abide by. So if there's certain like nondiscrimination requirements or certain inspection requirements, that's where HUD comes in. So basically, the board supervises you for operations, maintenance, construction, if we were to build a new, more public housing. We oversee the board in terms of setting kind of higher-level compensation and reporting, and then HUD has its own requirements. And I know that in, in previous, you know, we want to have a, I never take the presentation as a, as a, an attack thing, so that's, that's not what I'm about. But I know that residents have raised concerns, I know that councilmembers have asked for a meeting, and so hopefully, we can set something up, I don't know, I might not be there, but hopefully, there can be a joint meeting set up to kind of discuss some of those concerns because, you know, residents would come to me, and that's the reason why we kind of commissioned or asked for that legal opinion is to make sure that we were in our right, doing the right thing. But I think that those concerns need to be heard, and I think that really, if, if we can sit down and talk through them in a, in a non-combative kind of thing and hear them out, I think that's something that can be a positive thing. So my request is, Attorney Harkness, if you could share that by email, you know, with the Housing Commission Board, I think that'd be helpful, and then hopefully, we can set up a, a meeting to discuss some of those concerns. I know residents, when it comes to me, you know, I'm, I'm, I have to figure out what the right way to do and handle it is. So are there any, Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Kemp, will Grandview be included in the doors and windows?
No, they were updated, I want to say in 2001. In 2019, we are looking to replace flooring in Grandview Heights.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from counsel?
And just for the, for the record, we, we made the amended amendment to our website, posting the time. Residents are always welcome to come to our board meetings. The problem is, they don't come.
Okay.
So if they have... So, if they have issues, please direct them to, to us.
Okay.
Okay? But we'll get that meeting scheduled.
Okay.
Okay?
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So, thank you for saying that, because I know a few of the residents that reached out to me personally had reached out to board members. And it felt like they weren't being heard or taken seriously. So, to hear you encourage them to reach out to board members and attend these meetings, it's good to hear you say that. I think we, I think, like Mayor suggested, a, a conversation would be excellent so people feel heard, respected, and really received. Because I, I know before they reached out to me, they had reached out to, to a couple of board members, so.
Okay? Okay?
Any other comments or questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything. We'll move on now to items for individual discussion. Item A is request approval Resolution Number 2018-27, review of financial qualifications of candidates for elective office. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Do you want to do it or? Attorney Harper?
This is pretty, pretty self-explanatory, but just to give you some of the highlights is, pursuant to the Michigan Home Rule City Act and as well as our own charter, specifically Section 4.3, both the City Act and the charter provide that an individual is ineligible to take city office if they're in default of the city. So, essentially, what the resolution does is, as opposed to doing the screening for eligibility post-election, which can run, you know, could cause the obvious problems, is once a candidate turns in valid nominated petitions to the clerk, within fourteen days of receipt of those, the city will conduct a review, essentially, of the candidate's status and inform them in writing whether or not they, they are qualified or eligible to take office. So, hopefully, that will eliminate the issues that have been coming up over the last couple of election cycles, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Just as a, we'll have a discussion, I'll kick that off. So, been on council for a while. One of the things that happens in Albion is we are one of twenty-two communities in the state that has an income tax, so it's fairly rare. And because we don't have automatic withholding, like, for example, like the state has or the federal government, it, it causes issues for candidates, and it causes issues for the city in terms of revenue, because we have to go back and try to collect that. And there have been instances in the past where people were elected only to later find out, like you said, that they were, you know, tax-wise, but this can be anything, right? This can be delinquent water bill, anything that they owe the city that they have not paid. So, this will really, like, like the last, the last sentence says, basically, in the purpose and finding, to avoid the possibility of ineligible individuals from being elected to office. So, it's basically, it allows someone, if they owe the city in any way, at least four good months to get it together, so that they don't have issues and it doesn't cause a situation where the people's elected official can't take their office. So, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to say, we discussed this two years ago as a council. I thought we had a resolution in place. But I remember discussing this two years ago. So, the timing of this should not seem curious to anybody, because this is not the first time this discussion has taken place. Happy to see us actually have a resolution that I will not forget in place. Because again, I thought we had addressed this two years ago, but glad to see us addressing it now.
And I, and I think for me, just, it, it seems to me that public comment indicates maybe persons in the, in the community who know more than, than we do about these issues. So, I'm glad that we're making it a better working city in terms of our elections and, and democracy. So, any further question on that discussion from council? Okay, seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes, Reed, Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French, and Mayor Brown?
Yes, we approved Resolution 2018-27. Item B, discussion approval, second reading of proposed ordinance 2018-08, Code of Ethics. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Attorney Harper?
So, what you have in front of you is the Court of Ethics that we pieced together based on the council's comments and considerations. There are a couple of changes, and I, and I will note, the lady that got up in, spoke up, Ms. Connors.
Dr. Conn.
Dr. Connors. There is a typo in Section G. It should, it should say "only" instead of, it says "on". However, since the last, so with that change, the only other changes that we've made since the last meeting were the council requested, as part of the first reading, that we change the Level Two violations from $500 fine to $300. So, we've made that change, so that now the sanctions are incremental. $100 for Level One, $300 for Level Two, $500 for Level Three. Aside from that, the other change, the only other changes we made were to the effective date and the date of the second reading, because obviously, they got, we got shifted around when we were actually doing the second reading. So, that's pretty much it.
So, just for clarification purposes, there are two concerns. There was a question raised during public comment about this being inward-facing, and that's really the, the purpose of it. It's, it's, it's not a Code of Ethics for the entire city. Staff have personnel, a personnel manual. This is to enable council to enforce its own rules. I know that the charter gives us permission to set, set our own rules, you know, within law, and this is a tool to help us enforce that, because if a rule is violated, we have no way to have a, a substantive remedy to violation of our rules. So, and there is, because I know one of the council members mentioned this, because this passed first reading six to one. But there was a concern about, we, this doesn't have to follow civil rules of evidence. This is, this is basically, it can be appealed to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, here my, I mean, there's a, in that particular section, we actually adapted from under the municipality. And we knew we, the idea of the ordinance is, is basically so that council, A, has a set of ethics to follow, but B, can police itself. You know, I'm certainly, as counsel for the city, can provide you with interpretations, but I mean, it would, there's a reason why lawyers go to law school, and it would be difficult for laypeople to navigate the rules of evidence and the rules of civil procedure. And I think that's specifically why the other municipality and actually several other municipalities and this one have decided to say they don't apply to the situation. But it leaves you with the opportunity for appeal to the court system if you want to take that route and have those rules apply to try to seek some sort of appellate relief.
And I, I mentioned this in the discussion at our last first reading, that it's similar to a recall. If the County Board of Elections determines, you can always appeal it to the Circuit Court. So, and then, and I do believe there's a built-in public hearing, right? The council's just not going to take a vote without a public hearing on?
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a, a whole, for the, for the enforcement portion of it, I mean, it's, it's all open to the public. It's, it's, the individual can have counsel present.
Mayor, privilege.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, there's a, you're right, there's a public hearing section. So, yeah, I mean, it's very open.
And, and, and I guess for the, for the clarification, I know we, we consulted Hamtramck's ordinance and Allegan and Battle Creek, I believe. So, Battle Creek and Allegan, I think, were part, had a similar origin and a template, I believe. And Allegan was recommended to us by Attorney Smith. So, I, I think this is something we haven't had. I think it's something that we need. And I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't see the controversy in it. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to reiterate a point that you made. The first reading of this passed six to one. I think Councilmember Barnes was the only council member who voted against the first reading of this. So, I remember an extensive conversation about the fine amounts, and we were able to come to a consensus regarding that, and that change has been made. So, I, I don't see a reason why not to proceed with the second reading when everything that we discussed and agreed upon in the first reading is reflected here. So, that's, that's, that's my position.
And honestly, I think that the, some of the behavior that the community has been exposed to at these council meetings of the past two years, and the inappropriateness of it, I would not wish that on any other elected body, and definitely not my successor or our successors. So, I think this is important to be able to limit the disruptive, disrespectful, unbecoming behavior from members of the council going into the future. Are there any other, is there any further discussion or comments from council? Okay, Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted, I agree with what you just said. I think this is the first time council has ever had to even explore putting something like this in place. But I think it's important for, for us as a council, we have a responsibility to look after leadership that will come up after us. And since this issue was something we dealt with, we need to address it and make sure that the upcoming leaders have, have a roadmap.
Because?
Ahead of them, so.
And the last thing I'll say, these meetings are really conduct public business. They're not for showboating, they're not for coming here under the influence of substance. And they're, you should be sober and sober-minded in, in determining the people's business. So, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed, Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French, Barnes, and Mayor Brown?
Yes, we've adopted the Code of Ethics, Ordinance Number 2018-08. Section C, or excuse me, Item C, Request Approval, City Manager Contract Amendment Relative to Moving Expenses. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
Moving, supported. Would you like to explain what you're asking?
I'm just asking for additional time to turn in the receipts. I am not asking for additional money, so I want to make that clear. I'm not asking for any additional money from the city, just for additional time because of certain circumstances. That will be all.
And, okay, thank you. Is there any discussion from council? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Ms. Rufus, thank you for making that very clear. I just want to reiterate, this is not asking taxpayers for additional money. I don't even know why people thought that, or why people came up here with that thought in their mind, and why people made that accusation. We hadn't even discussed it as a council. So, whatever conclusion, I hear somebody talking, ma'am. Whatever conclusion that was drawn in error, I hope this clears that up for you all, but this is not an ask for additional taxpayer money. Thank you.
And, and what it is, it's in line with an ordinance regarding employment agreements. Basically, the, the manager makes contracts with department heads, and the mayor, council approval makes a contract with the, with the manager. And anytime there's, and I'll read from the, from the Code of, yeah, that's one thing. I'll read from the, the, our ordinance. It says, "In any such agreements executed pursuant to this section shall be substantially the same form as the council's approved, provided however, the, the city manager or mayor may vary the terms of such agreement after consultation with the, the council and city attorney." And this is a fairly minor amendment, so we're in line with the ordinance, and it's not costing the city any additional money. Is there any further discussion? Did you, a, a city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I'm, I'm glad that you mentioned that section of the charter in regards to contracts. In trying to ensure that there's proper leadership and things are done decently and in order, I have been reviewing contracts. I realize that there are contracts that were reviewed in March. I'm not sure if the council has saw them. There are renewal of employee contracts that were done in March of all of the employees that have contracts. And because it says that they have to be reviewed by council and attorney, I'm not aware of council has been, has reviewed any of these contracts. In addition to that, there are several contracts that do need to be renewed, not just employee contracts, but contracts relative to our cleaning services, just things that need to be updated, just cleaning house, so to speak. I operate on a team effort. We have meetings with the staff, we discuss things. I don't make decisions without discussing them with the administrative team first. We've had several discussions about all of these items that are on the agenda this evening. We talk about changes that need to be made in the department. So, I, I'm saying all this to say that within the next several weeks, the council, the public, will be able to see some of the inner workings of the city and what we've been doing here. I want to commend the department heads, and I want to commend them basically because, and, and this is just a little off track, so if you can give me two seconds, may I be really, really fast? There was a, I, I won't go there, but anyhow. All of the contracts, all the things that we've been doing, we've been doing them as a team. So, I don't want anyone to think that Ms. Rufus came and started making all these decisions without discussing them with the administrative staff. I've had several conversations with members of the council, even members of the council that are not here. So, know that we are going to be transparent, we are going to be informative, and I want to assure the residents of Albion, I'm Team Albion. I may not have been born and raised in Albion, but I have your best interests at heart. I don't know many people here, but I'm here to do what's right for the city. And unfortunately, there are some things that we're changing. There were a lot of great things that were done prior to me being here, but there are some things that we need to do to move the city to the next level. So, that's why I'm bringing up all this information about contracts and how we need to move forward in ensuring that all of our contracts are done properly and open and transparent.
So, any further discussion from council? Councilmember Spicer, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question with regard to the amendment relative to moving expenses, this additional time. Is there any timeframe?
It's ninety days. By January first, prior to January first. It'll probably be within the next thirty days, but I wanted to make sure I have all the information that you need.
Okay, I, I saw that, I just wanted to state that for the public viewing purposes.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Brown?
I, I have questions, but I, I think they will be more appropriate under Councilmember comment. But I do have some questions about something Ms. Rufus mentioned, and I just want to make sure I heard what I heard.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is to extend that, we've heard the date. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll just do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French, Barnes, Reed, and Mayor Brown?
Yes. We've approved the amendment to the manager's contract for moving expenses. Item D, Discussion Approval Attorney Fees for Council Rule, Rules Review. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
The council set a cap, I believe it was twelve hundred, for Attorney Smith, who did an excellent job. He also came in January, I think, January eleventh, I remember that day, and did an excellent job explaining the roles of mayor, council member, and manager. And we had him review. And we had him review the rules. We're at the very last version of that. He's, I believe he gave the city a discounted rate, greatly discounted rate. And so we need to raise that a little bit, just to finish the last part. I know that at the last meeting, Councilmember French asked that we do that in terms of complete that process, so this is a step in that. So yeah, so that's what we're going to do. So this, and I think so far, the other fees have been paid through administrative prerogative, but... Okay. So the motion is to allow that, we'll set a fee, we'll probably set...
The only thing I would say is to just put some sort of a ceiling on it.
Okay.
I don't know exactly how much has been paid today because those were paid by former Interior Manager Kip. I don't know if Finance Director knows off the top of his head, probably not, but I guess my thought would be put a ceiling on additional expenditures.
Okay, so just for three. I mean, I don't think he's going to get that high at all.
You mean three in addition to what's already been paid?
No, three max.
I think it's already over that.
He's going that far, okay.
I think.
Okay.
Or Chief Kip, in the back. But I think... Chief, are we north of three with Scott Smith or south of three thousand?
Okay, so just three to the addition?
Well, that's a, I mean, that's a council. I'm just saying put some sort of a ceiling.
Okay, we'll do three. I mean, because the only thing we have, there was a question that was asked in the final review about the status of a Sergeant-at-Arms. I think I sent that to you. The question about the Sergeant-at-Arms issue.
We talked about it. We didn't send it.
Okay, I thought I did, okay. But he needs to look at that and then we're done, so. So I would just say, I would just, a motion to do that, to set it at three in addition to what we had set originally. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a problem with this final step of getting this. I think though, it would be good to have a figure of what we have spent.
Okay.
Already, because from what I hear, it's above three, but we don't know exactly what's been spent. And what I'm hearing tonight is set a cap, but we don't know how much we've spent, if that makes sense. So I would be more comfortable getting how much we've spent out for council to know so we can determine what cap to set and maybe we could do that on Monday.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to postpone until Monday's meeting?
I, I moved to do that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We can take just a voice vote on that to postpone until Monday's meeting, Monday's meeting, and then we'll get that per...
Well, we'll check with either, probably the Finance Department because I mean, they didn't send the bills to me. I just wanted to find out after the fact that we're over the twelve hundred that the council authorized that to be paid.
Okay, okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. We'll just do a voice vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're gonna, that has been postponed to Monday's agenda and we'll get that information. Item E, Discussion Ash Street Right-of-Way Sale.
First, um...
City Manager?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. First, I would ask for, prior to me speaking, if I can ask for Interim Director Kent Phillips, John Tracy, and our Finance Director, as well as the interim City Manager, Chief Kip, to come forward for us to discuss this matter, please. And I would like to start by saying, as we started earlier, Mayor, you talked about us following charter, us following rules and regulations and being in compliance with our city ordinances. There is a section in the employee manual that says that we should not utilize information that we know as city employees for personal gain. I don't want to set a dangerous precedent. We talked about transparency, so let's please be transparent. I'm not sure of what's on the right of way, what's there, what's not there. I apologize that Mr. Toppin has been met with roadblocks prior to me being here. However, as the new City Manager, my goal, I'm pro-development, I'm pro-building, I'm pro-expansion, I'm pro-bringing Albion to the next level. However, there are some concerns that we have discussed as a team. Interim City Manager Kip explained to me that he explained to this board that we should not sell, give, the right of way. As we all know, the city has obtained the parcel directly adjacent to it. I have talked to the individual professionals that were here before me, mainly the individuals that are handling our CDPG monies, the individuals that handle our roadway expansion projects. I have talked to some individuals from MDOT. I have talked to individuals from all of the professional entities outside of the city of Albion that has assisted the city of Albion to move forward in any of these development projects. As I stated, I'm new here and I want to do whatever I can to ensure that we have the best type of development in this town. So I have to make sure I depend on the other professionals that have been here prior to my tenure. So first, I would like to ask if Interim Director Phillips can talk about if you know what's at the right of way and how, and your opinion of that, sir?
At this moment, we don't know what's under the right of way. There could be a sewer collection system stub. There could be water main stub. At this moment, we just don't know. So it would just be premature for me to say that there's nothing there and it won't have any impact or effect.
For the Finance Director, can you move forward as well? Normally, when you sell city property, it's not always for a gain. It's always for a purpose, for a bigger picture. And we are not going to be receiving any money for this parcel regardless. So what is your opinion upon alleviating the city's responsibility of the right of way?
Well, obviously, from the Finance Director's opinion or position on this, I guess, you know, if you read the charter, Finance Director is supposed to be over the assets of the city. As you stated, letting this go free of charge and hopefully without incurring any selling costs. I don't know if that's been addressed, but sometimes selling costs are, come after the fact. I know some of them will probably be handled by the person trying to obtain it, the property owner trying to obtain it, but we just want to make sure we're not going to get stuck with any deed recordings, title work, any of that kind of stuff going forward, especially since we're not receiving any revenue coming in to cover those costs. And the longer term picture, I think probably with the property that the city owns adjacent to this, I mean, we have to kind of look at the, will it impede the value of that property down the road? You know, I don't know, because it's going to eliminate some of the right of way or to be able to, to have access or potentially develop that property down the road. So there are some concerns, obviously, from the finance perspective of is the city getting top dollar or the money that it should give from this? I don't know. I'm not a real estate expert or developer or anything, but it's just something to consider.
Mr. Tracy?
I believe each one of you received a small scale map there in front of you. If you look at that, the red section, there's a small square that has R O W on it, right of way, is the property or the right of way that's in question. To the west of it, which would be on the west budding side of the right of way to Del Rumpel Street, that you see on there, there's approximately ten point nine acres of property that the city is taking ownership, that can be developed at some point in time. And to the south, between the south side of the right of way, there's approximately ten acres of privately owned land that runs from there back up a budding property on Mechanic Street. So that right of way in the future could be used at some point for accessing property and also for emergency equipment.
Thank you.
Chief Kip, please, can you step forward, sorry?
Just to reiterate what I stated back in September fourth, is that this, we don't know what the potential development is for this property and this right of way is a key access to that area and continue to support that the city doesn't have a need to get rid of this property at this time. And I think I support with the fact that the city should hang on to this.
So, question?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So a couple of questions here when I was listening, and thank you all. One is that, I guess the council's already approved it. And I guess that, that's, that's the first, it's kind of legal question, so that's the first thing. And then the other question... So that's, that's the first question. I guess the second question is, given the, the map that we received tonight, which is pretty much the GIS thing, printout, the major, there's like two major blocks of property here, the one that's like immediately kind of southwest of the right of way, that's privately held. So I guess my question is, do we have a sense of where the right of way would go? Would we, I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of what, what a street expansion right there would look like?
At this moment, Mayor, we're not really sure. As I stated earlier, by me being really new to the Albion area, I really leaned toward discussion from individuals who have been working here, the city engineer. I talked to, like I said, the individuals that kind of sort of do economic development in this town. And, and just giving the example of this particular situation, it makes it seem as if, one, I was initially concerned about perception. Everyone has been talking about transparency, 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 regardless of if anyone else in this city does not live by this property. Are we providing an individual who has specific knowledge of property that the city is obtaining or future development access to purchase property that could potentially be financially beneficial to them in the future? How is that going to look toward the city? As it states in the employee manual, we are not supposed to utilize the information that we have as a city employee for personal gain. That bothered me first. Number two, when speaking in detail with former interim City Manager Chief Kip, he made it very clear to me that he stated to this council that we not get rid of this right of way. Furthermore, further conversation with the entire administrative team, mainly speaking with Mr. Phillips, I don't know what's there. I don't know sewer lines, water lines, and I can't say what's going to be there because we don't know what the potential development is going to be. Because if you give up that right of way, we don't know what access is going to be given or how we're going to be able to develop the land. All I'm saying is, I know that Chief Kip also had said, maybe we can lease it over a period of time until further development comes and we're able to utilize and find out what's underneath the ground so we know what, what is there. I would be amenable to that, but to totally give away the right of way and we are not aware of what future development is coming, I just don't think that's in the best interest of the city. As I continually state, I'm new, but you've heard from the professionals that have been here. Combined, they have over sixty years of experience being in this community, not including the experience of the individuals that have administered our CDPG grant programs or individuals that have transportation and planning background outside of the experience that I have. And I'm not aware of, you know, I understand that this council have made, may have made a decision, but now that we've had the public hearing and the city's professional staff has had the opportunity to do additional research, I think that this council really needs to take into content what the professional staff has said. And those are the things that have been brought to my attention. And because, and because these things are being brought to my attention, I have to lean on the opinion of the administrative staff and what they're telling me. If the interim City Manager at that time stated, "We shouldn't do this," I don't know what happened in that process, but something needs to happen so that we ensure that we handle this properly. And right now, I'm not sure which way we need to go. That would be a question for our city attorney, but you've kind of heard the opinion of this professional staff here.
Councilmember Brown, then Attorney Harkness.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to speak on the professional quote-unquote opinion that this council got previously. What we were told was nowhere near what we heard tonight. We were not told. We don't know what's under the right of way. Their chief interim City Manager at the time did raise concerns about if a developer was potentially come in, how would they be able to access land? But that was, that was the issue. So council took action that night based on what, what concerns were raised, and that's what was raised. If there was a developer that came in, how would they access the property? And I remember Mayor Brown even pulled it up on his phone and we took a look at the screen to figure out that that, it really, it wasn't, the issue that was presented was, there was a way around it. So I wanted to explain how council reached the decision that was reached.
If you could give me one second, Councilmember Brown, if you look at the right of way, you, you can't get to the property directly in between Elm and Ash where it meets to, to access that property because that property belongs to someone else. This person, fact that the property would be landlocked unless we grant a right of way offer to Del Rumpel. I'm just asking not to limit what could potentially happen and, and I yield to the professional staff that has been here prior to my tenure.
Councilwoman Brown, Attorney Harkness, unless you...
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to say that also at the time council took this decision, it wasn't until after our vote that it was determined that there was some ownership. Remember, nobody had looked into, we didn't find out until after we voted that there was...
Was it a survey question?
Well, that was why the survey was needed, because there was something that you all found out after we voted that we didn't know at the time we voted.
This point, I think it was an issue about, part of it was...
Part of it, we didn't have a, we didn't have a legal description.
That's right.
Because it was a right of way, which means we would have, in order to get a right of way and abandon a right of way, we'd have to have a legal description to have something recorded, registered. Deeds into doing that, found out that the adjacent parcel is owned by the land bank because...
The treasury.
I think it went back on the taxes. And then the other, and usually when you abandon a right of way, it goes half to one property owner and the other half to the other property owner. And so there was a question about, okay, well, once it comes back from the county or we're going to have to then sell that portion and that's when this whole thing kind of got put on hiatus.
So what we have right now is council approval... So what we have right now is council approval, okay?
What I recall, and I could be wrong, is that the council approved the sale of the property. Now, I guess if, if you're looking from me, um, you know, if you're looking to not go in that direction anymore, my understanding is our, our council rules provide an option to rescind a vote that's previously been taken unless council has, you know, relied on that in some, in some form that, that they, um, it would be detrimental to the council. So, um, I think in this particular case, you could vote to rescind that previous decision.
If, if you voted in the majority.
I'm sorry?
If you voted in the majority on that vote.
Well, I'm just looking at Rule sixteen.
Right.
Says any vote taken may be rescinded unless something has been done as a result of the vote that the council cannot undo. Legal counsel shall advise us to potential legal liability. So, um, I think you can vote to rescind it, is what I'm saying.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I see it done as a discussion item and I, I am thankful for the information. I'm thankful for your, you diligently looking into, um, the complete situation. I just wanted it to be clear that council made a decision based off the information we had at the time, which was not as extensive as what we have now. So I wanted that to be clearly understood. Yeah, I'm, I'm processing at this moment, so that's where I'm at.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's discussion so we don't have to make a, you know, we don't, we can't have a vote, but, um, but I do know that, that request has been in there for a while, but I was trying to think about, um, two is that it might pre, it probably predates us putting the process in place for the sale of, um, city property that's, not being, you know, utilized by the city. So, that, that, that's weighing heavily too on me as well. So, I'm glad we don't have to make a decision tonight, but we thank the manager and the staff for, um, providing us with that information. Okay, we'll move on now to excuse absent council members. We've heard from all of them, so I, I'd ask for a motion to do that.
Stumble.
Is there a second?
Of course.
Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, any opposed? We have excused, um, the absent council members. Public comments, and I should say just as a, a point of order here, there should be a manager's report there, um, but you can take that if you want to, um, that's just, I think that's a typo because this is a special meeting, so. Public comments, persons addressing the city council, shall leave their comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum. Are there any public comments this evening? Please state your name and address.
Rose J. Bradley, I live at 312 Arthur Street, Albion, Michigan, and I am a, on the board of directors for the Albion Housing Commission. I had two questions, Mayor Brown. Number one, and my hearing is not what it used to be of getting older, but there seemed to have been, you said something about compensation for board members for the housing commission? I've been on the board a long time and I've yet to get a check for rendering service. There is no compensation, the Albion Housing Commission board members. We serve at the pleasure of the city. Number one, uh, no stipends and no monthly checks from anybody. We are given by HUD the privilege of attending a conference maybe once a year to be brought up on the new rules and regulation of HUD. And on some occasions we go, some we don't, but I want you to make note that there is no money that passes hands for the service that we run. Number two, I was a little discouraged when, uh, it came up about who is allowed to voice, opposition to the way we do business pertaining to, um, residents. The first order of business at our board meeting, first person on the agenda is those that have comments to make to the board itself. In the last twenty-four months, uh, we have seen about three people that came forward with complaints, three. Number one, that attended most to just about every, uh, board member was Commissioner Barnes, and he represented, uh, I guess those that were complaining. Our rules and regulations by HUD state that we have to post that. The people that live in the housing commission have a right to come and voice their opinions. If you have an opinion against the way it's being ran or against the executive director, you can be heard by all of us. Not one letter sent to one commissioner, another letter sent to another commissioner. We get to all hear you at the same time, tell us what you want to tell us. Our tenants have, uh, not elected that process. Evidently, they find that it's more convenient or profitable to send them to other places. Number one, you have to be a resident of the housing commission.
Okay.
If you live there and you abide by the rules and regulations, and I want to say this and my time will run out, the board of directors for the Albion Housing Commission, HUD tells us that we are there to do policy and procedure, policy and procedure. We do not micromanage the executive director. I do not have the right to go into her office and complain to her about her employees. That's her job. That's what she's paid to do. And we are not to go in there and HUD tells us, uh, to create confusion. We let her do her job. And, and as far as we're concerned, she's done an excellent job of that. I would hate to lose her. And, uh, I wish that, uh, those of you that are receiving, uh, letters or comments from people that don't live there that have, uh, questions about us, you are invited to bring them to the housing commission board and you come with them.
Thank you.
So we'll know who they are because they are not contacting us.
Thank you.
And I'll say this, and I'm through.
Okay.
When was the last time you picked up a paper and read about a killing or a shooting or a drug, uh, raid in Albion Housing Commission? We do the best that we can to make it a suitable and a very nice place for the residents of Albion to live.
Thank you.
I thank you for your time.
Any further public comment this evening?
Elizabeth Craig, eight oh two Austin Avenue, and I am a non-resident. I'm speaking on the housing commission issue. I'm a non-resident of the housing commission and I wanted, I was barred on hearsay and I was wanting to, um, come and talk with the, uh, members of the board. And I was told by Mrs. Kemp that I couldn't attend any meetings because I wasn't a, a resident of the, of the housing commission and, um, because I was barred. But if I can't have a meeting and find out exactly why, you know, I need to know because if the residents can come and meet, and then I have relatives that live there, lots of friends, and she just simply told me that I could not come to a meeting. I wanted to meet with the board. I sent out letters to the board members and I got, uh, not, well, they, I just sent them a letter on the incident. And I called, I wanted to have a meeting with Ms. Kemp and spoke with her myself and she denied me of that meeting at all, told me that if I was found on the premises that I would be arrested for trespassing. So I need to know what can I do to get into a meeting? I'm, I mean, I have an issue there. If I'm barred and she's telling me I can't go to a meeting, then what? So they just throw it out, you know, throw the, throw the issue out the window? It'll never get solved. And then that's very person that went to her and said that I was harassing, uh, him, I have proof that I've been harassed by him out, you know, right outside, um, right by the housing commission. And, and I came down, made a report just like he did to the police, but nothing was done, nothing at all. So I want to know what, what can be done about that.
Thank you. Is there any further, uh, public comment this evening?
Eric Tobin, four oh nine West Ash. I, I, I wanted to thank the council for taking the time to work on my project for me. I mean, it's, it sounds like it's clear that we're heading in a different direction, but, just some, just some comments, uh, first of all, on expenses, let's talk about finances. On the financial end of it, this particular property right now is an expense of the city. If you were to add it to my property, it would become a revenue, an asset to their, it would become a revenue, an income source to the city. So we're talking about revenue versus expenses, it's that. My wife and I moved to Albion. We had, we had no real interest in, um, uh, using our piece of property as this massive investment vehicle, so, you know, I take offense to that. We're just residents of Albion. We would just like to have a little extra space and would like to have, be able to have a garden, a nice-sized garden. As far as the sewer issues, um, I, I talked to Scott when we had a backup recently and he said that our, the sewer line ends right, that the, the manhole there is the end of the line for our sewer thing and it all flows the other way, uh, and towards the opposite direction. So I don't know of any, of the sewer things, and I know we have maps of those things, so I would assume that if we put something there, that we would have a, a map of that. We've got tons of maps and stuff downstairs and I know we've been having a lot of, uh, you know, having some opportunity to get, to look at those things. And just, uh, on the, uh, on the road issues, on the access points, you got all of Darwimpel to access that property. You've got, uh, a, a half a block of, of Ann Street to access that property. What is a hundred feet in the total equation? You'd have to make an elbow turn in order to use that as a, otherwise, how are you going to turn around a snowplow? It's going to come down to the end of the thing and have to back up. Okay? Those are some things that, that we've got to look at when you're looking at a development. As far as roads and stuff like that, I was a road commissioner. We used to do these road abandements all the time. It was very simple process. It was not in-depth. It did not require mountains of time and energy put into it. I don't know why it's taken so long and so much of a hard of a process for, for Albion. I apologize to the council for being frustrated, but this has been four years. And we've wanted this property before I was work, you know, this whole, uh, set of property before I even worked for the city. So, um, yeah, so that's, that's all I got for me. I'll, I'll let my wife also.
Chris Tobin, four oh nine West Ash. The council's already made a decision and I'd hope you guys would stick to that decision. We've been asking for this property for four years. This was way before Dairy Wimpel was demolished, way before the city owned the property. We are taking away a maintenance fee. I watch every two weeks to a month, a mower come out there and mow. Just because Mr. Tobin is an employee of this city does not mean he used whatever vehicle you think he used to get information about this property. This is public property information. We went to the city of Marshall and got information from there. I am disappointed that the city has wasted so much time and energy and cost for one simple decision on a small piece of property. Lastly, if you're not going to give us this property like you already made the decision for, I hope that you will hold yourself accountable for the rest of the decisions that we have to be held accountable before for keeping our property up to standards. Clean up the trash. I have asked for the trash to be cleaned up several times. There is milk jugs and all other types of trash. There is TVs. There is trees that need to be removed. Not only that, there is trash all along the Dairy Wimpel property, along the whole fence row of the housing that's there, and I hope that that gets addressed as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further, uh, public comment this evening?
Good evening. My name is Daniel Farmer. I live eleven oh one, eleven oh one Weiner Drive. Um, I would miss last week's meeting, I was sick. I, you guys talked about a six oh eight Austin Ave demolition. I have some concerns. I, I don't understand, one, how it's being paid for. I don't understand why the city is getting involved in a, in a, in a privately-owned property and from what I'm seeing on Facebook, we're using the solid waste mileage to pay for this. The same solid waste mileage that's supposed to go for leaf pickup, but we can't even pay for lea, uh, street cleanup once a year or to run a street sweeper. Wha- what are we doing? I, I came almost a year ago, well, six months ago now, to ask, what are you doing by the streets? Because we had corn growing on Eaton Street and sunflowers growing on Eaton Street. I mean, this is ridiculous. We can do better. We are better. You know, I'm Albion to the core. I've been, I grew up here, I was born and raised here. Ms. Rufus, you don't know me, um, you should though. I waited a week and a half to ask for a meeting with you. I came in, they said you don't take meetings verbally, so I submitted in writing, it went into your box and I haven't heard from you since. I would still like a meeting with you. I honestly think that, I see a street sweeper in Albion and it's on Albion College's property, which is our streets, right? They don't own our streets? Why are we doing union jobs? Private entities doing union jobs. I don't understand this. You know, we're paving their parking lots for them. That was taken care of last year, whatever that was, there's never been an investigation. Did we do an investigation into that? How it happened? Who did it? Who knew what, when? That's fraud. Why are we not, I, I mean, mm-hmm, where, where's, where's the call to the sheriff? I mean it, I mean, I'm tired. I, I want, I want us to be better. We can be better. We are better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. How are you doing?
Is there any further public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll move on to city manager report. Do you have anything?
I just want to say thank you to all of the residents and everyone in Albion that's been very helpful in allowing me to get adjusted to being in this new position. I do want to say that I am definitely excited about the opportunity as I've stated before, but I want everyone to also know that, um, I believe in having an inclusive form of government. When I make decisions about this city, I talk to the individuals that have been here before me, the staff. They have the knowledge and experience that I don't have because they have the history of being here. Unfortunately, I may not handle things in the manner in which other people have handled them prior to me, um, or either how some other managers or other employees handle situations. However, I'm very upfront and I'm very open with my staff and allow them to come to me and tell me what's going on, but there are some things that I am not going to tolerate. Disrespect is one of them. And I have been disrespected, not just by some staff members, some individuals in the community. And I have not said anything out about it because there, and, and there is separation between church and state, but there's someone else that handles my battles for me that's higher than I am. So however anyone takes that, that's fine, but I'm here to do a job. I got caught in the middle of a political mayhem. I didn't know Mayor Brown, I didn't know anybody on this council when I came here. And I will hope that the citizens of Albion give me the opportunity to do the job that I was hired to do. I have a good heart. I have this town at first all the time. I think about the best ways to handle situations in this community. I talk to community leaders. I've had a lot of people call me and the people that have called me, I will not say names, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your help. But don't assume that I'm on anybody's political agenda because I don't know anybody in this town. I came here from Illinois. I came here from a totally different place. And the individuals that work for this city, the individuals that you saw this evening, Ms. Domingo, Ms. Snyder, Mr. Tracy, Chief Kip, Deputy Chief Kern, Mr. Tracy and Mr. Phillips, these individuals have been here with me through, and I'm going to say the trenches. I haven't been in the military, but I know what that's like. This has been a battle that I was not even, I didn't even know I was in the battle. And it's unfair for people to judge me based on assumption. So to, to alleviate the assumption, I'm not on anybody's team. I'm on Team Albion. So if that's the team you want to be on, I am the... So if that's the team you want to be on, I am the city manager for you. But at this point, the election's over. The people have decided who they want to be in charge of this community and allow me to do the job that I was hired to do. Am I qualified to do this job? Absolutely. I have secured over 14.1 million dollars in grant money. I've had ice swords demolished that cost $4 million that have stood in communities that lasted over 30 years. I've had to sit on boards where you build highways. I don't mean streets. I'm talking about highways where interstates connect. I have the experience to do this job. Albion is a third of the place as far as in size of where I come from. And so I want everybody to know, don't assume without talking to me. We may not agree, but we can agree to disagree. But we're going to do it decently and in order and respectfully. And that's all I ask. I appreciate your time this evening, Mayor. And, um, at the next city council meeting, um, don't be upset because there are things that we found, a ton of them. The city has done a lot of great things prior to my tenure here. But there are some things that we need to change. And you're talking about being transparent. I'll tell you this, if you really want transparency, I guarantee you, you will have no clue. I told people I came here wearing flats, but I should have had on galoshes. And you all have to understand, this is real serious because this community needs the best. And we need to put our political agendas aside and do what's right for this community and stop developing and mentoring and moving this city forward in a vacuum. Because you have to develop an entire city and not parts. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. And for all the community that has been here and supporting me, I really appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, uh, manager Rufus. We'll move on now to mayor and councilman comments. Are there any comments this evening? Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I won't take up much of your time, but Ms. Rufus, I wrote this down because I wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. You made a statement about some revisions of contracts that occurred in March. That's March of this year.
Yes.
So are we going to hear more about that at a later date?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Um, um, when you talk about contracts, certain contracts have to be done in closed session. There was no closed session on this agenda. However, I am going to be forwarding information to the attorney and to this council within the upcoming days prior to the next council meeting. Um, there are several contracts that have been approved. I don't know if they've gone before council. And so for me, everybody's saying, let's be transparent. So I, I want to be transparent. Either, see, either you're going to do this or you're not going to do this. Because don't assume that Ms. Rufus came and started changing things. I haven't changed one rule. I changed the policy, how you sign in to make sure somebody was protected when they come in this building. And my name has been dragged through the mud for it. But when I have a staff member that calls me and tells me that someone's standing behind them, that's a problem for me. And then I have people on social media saying signing in is not going to stop people who may have wanted to shoot up City Hall. That incites danger to me in the day and age that we're in. So I'm not upset. I just want you to know, I want to protect our staff. So don't be mad at me for wanting to protect the individuals that are employed in this building. That, that's my, that's my goal. So everything I'm saying about contracts and all that stuff is, is, is going to be out in the open. I'm sure people don't want transparency the way they say they do.
Councilor Brown?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So Ms. Rufus, I, I thank you. I applaud you. I, um, you do what you need to do to make sure this building and these employees are safe. That is, um, a number one priority. So you do what you need, you do what you need to do, um, that is well within the scope of your job. And, um, just know you have people that support you and focus on positive energy.
Thank you.
So, so, you, you, sir. Oh, yeah, this is not, yeah, this is not the appropriate time to do that. Thank you, sir. Um, um. Okay. Um, thank you. Um, is there any further comments from the council? Um, one of the things I want to say, and I, I think that struck me is, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was asked, um, a question about, uh, meeting with, um, the people that have been elected for this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, some of them were met with an attorney and some of them were not met with an attorney. So I'm not sure how to, um, go about that or how to put it out there in a professional way.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just bringing that to the attention of the city council and the clerk and the attorney.
Okay. Well, we can discuss after the meeting if we can, yeah. Um, is there any further comment from councilmembers? Um, so just a, I guess, just a thought here. I, I would echo, um, the manager's comments, uh, that, uh, you're here to do a job and, and there is no agenda but making sure that the city is running as it should. Uh, I, I think one of the things that I'm going to be really frank about, I think ha- having served in the council, um, for eight years, uh, I, I, you, you, you see who the, the regulars are. So I know when we have a study session or a regular meeting, so I kind of know who shows up. Um, and I actually have a, um, front seat, the hot seat for, you know, in what, in some cases can be political theater. Um, and we, we know that, um, there are legit concerns and people have a right to organize. Um, but I, and I, and I think, and to be really frank, I think that the, um, I don't know if it's the Citizens Watch or, or Citizens Council, uh, I appreciate the effort that's, um, being put into, um, providing insight. Um, but I, and I don't have it in front of me, but I know that there was like a, I don't know, a 15-point, um, tenant list of, of, uh, the goals or, or value commitments of, of that group. And, and I think one of them was to affirm and to support strong city ma- council manager form of government. And so I think that, I'm hoping that, um, in a principled way, if we're, if we're committed to principle, um, actions and interactions in the community, that the, the holder of that role doesn't affect that commitment. Um, so I think that we're all committed to council manager form of government. We're all committed to elected, elected officials handling policymaking and the manager and her staff handling operations and implementation. Um, so I think that, uh, if, if we are principled and we're really meaning what we say when we write those things down, I think there shouldn't be a, um, really, there shouldn't be, I'm going to be really honest, there shouldn't be campaigns of misinformation, of harassment, um, of really denigrating people's character. Um, because, um, Albion is 8,500 people. We'll see what happens in the census, but, um, that's too much drama. Um, and it's subjected to really, these are not full-time positions. These are, in the case of the elected officials, they're less than part-time. Um, and so the staff is, is, uh, bare bones as well. So I think that we're all trying to do what we think is in the best interest of the, the city. And, um, I, I don't think, whether it's me or my successor, I don't think the community wins when we have organized, um, disinformation smear campaigns, whether it's in person or on social media. And so I hope going forward, my successor does not have to endure that level of, uh, really political, um, character assassination. So I think, uh, I'm, I'm serious about that and I'm committed to making sure going forward, even outside of elected office, that truth is out. Um, because we're, we're not going to, you know, we cannot move forward as a community with that kind of divisiveness. So with that being said, I'd. Oh, yeah, okay. So, um, did you have a? Okay. Uh, I'm going to just give the manager.
Two seconds.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, this morning, I attended the AMA meeting with the pastors this morning here at city council. Um, and I want to make it very clear what was discussed. Um, Ms. Rufus, Latanya Rufus will be sponsoring a family for Christmas, not the city of Albion. So I wanted to make that clear and that, um, I will be working with the AMA and they will be choosing the family. So it will not even be of, of my picking. Um, I feel that I, if I'm going to be in the community, I need to be of the community. And that is something that Latanya Rufus has decided to do that is separate of the city of Albion. So I just want, wanted that to be clear. Um, that is made note. Um, if any one of my staff members would like to assist me in that endeavor, that would be fine. But I wanted to make it clear that it, it's me, myself, that will be doing that for a family in Albion for Christmas.
Okay. Um, seeing no further comments, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second? All those in favor say yes? Yes. Opposed, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Let me, let me get your Academy Award here. I said, I said, here's your, your Academy Award.